This is the Diamond School Committee meeting for September 12th, 2024. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yeah.
Mr. Dibiasiu?
Here.
Mr. Deegan?
Here.
Ms. Menard?
Here.
Mr. Pachico? Dr. Nara?
We have a call. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30, A, Section 21, F, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this meeting. A member of the public who wishes to record the meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the reasonable requirement regarding audio or video even established by the chair as an acting agreement. Anybody here?
I have not heard nothing.
No, okay. Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The motion to approve the August 15th, 2024 met. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, propose.
There we are.
3.0 on finish. We have none. 3.1, all a matter. MSBA's student committee update.
Yes, Mr. Bentley will fill in whatever I missed. But over the summer, the work was completed on the driveway coming in when they put in all new branch. Then moved the driveway over and put in three new set of stairs, two that are currently being used by the students. The third one will probably stay out of service until the project moves along a lot further because of the corner that it's on. The project itself, the steel is coming, as everybody can see. My grandson came by here today with my daughter and booked up in Sora Castle, he said. But it's, the steel is moving and of course that'll keep happening now until sometime late December, beginning of January. Other than that, the, we're just about finished with the concrete, right? Right, as concrete's just about done. They are finishing the, the masons are still working. And that's about it right now. We're, we're hoping to get to the point where we get a section done and then they can stop putting the insulation on to close it in so they can do work on the inside. Brian, again?
Only one, it's a recent development. Tomorrow, one of the project managers, Eric Kenny, is coming into the building. They would like to put inside the building what they're going to call a four, four body or visual displays, TDS, in a four by eight area in the building that people will be able to see. And they're gonna call it behind the scrim, which is that curtain that they put over there. And it's gonna be different live feeds of the work going on down there on the field. And it's gonna be in a public place. So when people come in saying, you know, how's the project going? Before going over to the fence, they'll be able to see the four different monitors with four different spots that they'll be pointing out.
Did you find a spot for it?
We are going to find one tomorrow because they're going to pay for all this and they're gonna hook it all up and all that stuff. But tomorrow, we, Paul and I, this morning, walked the building. We believe we have the spot, which is actually towards the cafeteria area, which would be kind of nice because the students come in and they see it, but they don't see the actual going on. So we're going to find that place tomorrow and then going to be moving on that. So that's all that was.
I just thought it's another good work for the public when they hear, what's the building going on? They can see it right.
That's amazing. It's amazing.
Is there any way they could connect maybe to the TV room 251? They could?
We talked about a spot for 251 because our patrons come in and they ask all the time, how is it going? And they can see it. But it'd be much more interesting and engaging if they can see it happening live.
Right. Right. I mean, had the one that you're talking about.
Yeah, the current one right over the fireplace there.
Right.
The fireplace, I call it.
Yeah, because you know what I mean.
That's it. As a warm glow, but something that the patrons can see. That's a good idea.
That's amazing.
We talked about that today, too.
That's a great idea.
It is. So we'll see how it goes tomorrow when we have the meeting tomorrow and then we're gonna come up here and take a look at it.
And of course, Helena, Helena knows when another crack is coming because they're lined up at the door to fill out the Cory paperwork for Helena to, they can't be on the property until they get all Cory checked. Thank you for doing that. That's it. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
Hi. We have a Suffolk contract amendment. Number 006 and IGMP 006.
Both those, Mr. Chairman, are in your packet that's there. And 006 and IGMP 00, these have been already talked about with the building, building committee. And the recommendation is to approve the Suffolk contract amendment 006 and IGMP 006. It has submitted.
Yeah, motion to approve.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, propose. MSBA's running expenditures, Mr. Kitchen?
These are the expenditures from August for Colliers Project Leaders, KPA is 133,156.15. And subjects, AIA, it's 6,120,550. That would include also, like I did inquire, that includes the excavation.
All right, need a motion to approve.
One. So move.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, propose. Moving on to personnel.
I focus now, Mr. Chairman, thanks for the members. This is a list of individuals who have been hired for the opening of school. And apart one with that are the mentors. It's all new teachers for the first two years. You need a mentor in order to work with them and getting them into not only the diamond way of doing things, but also the correct way for their education licenses. You do have a second sheet of paper, too, also with personnel. It looks like this, it might have some regimental on it because we did have some updates to when the list was originally put together. And again, this is no action needed by the committee, just that this is your information. Is there a citation for mentors? Yes, there's a citation to the mentorship. For a year? For a year. For a year. It's a two-year commitment from the mentor.
All right, moving on to 3.1, all a matters, advisory board appointment?
Yes, we do have three members who have applied, to be three individuals who have applied for, to the advisory board. The first is Robin Leatherwood at Culinary Arts. And her experience includes food technology, product development, regulatory nutrition, packaging, project management. She's also the leader of our research and development team and acts as a mentor and coach to her peers. She's connected with Mount Seafoods and there's quite the website on her. She is a former diamond, she's a diamond graduate out of the drafting program who found a whole new career in doing what she's doing here. Second one is Katie Pereira for Advanced Manufacturing and is a senior at Advanced Manufacturing. Well, this is a current senior. She is interested in being an advocate for the program while joining the advisory board. And the third is Matthew Wisco, Graphic Communications. Mr. Wisco is a general manager at a local company. His company has been a co-op education employer for the past, what, years? Diamond students. Mr. Wisco's goal is to join the advisory board to learn from the current instructors and provide valuable insight. Recommendation is to appoint Mrs. Leatherwood, Miss Pereira, and Mr. Wisco to the advisory board of the identified programs for a term of three years.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second? All in favor? Aye, propose. And three resignation.
Personnel for resignation, we do have three individuals, although two were listed. There was an update, one just recently occurred. We have this Amy Imbo, who's the administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent principal. Mr. Andrew Rabello, the assistant superintendent principal. And a third one that just happened overnight, and that is our school librarian, Nathan Burns, who has indicated, not indicated, has sent in a letter of resignation to accept that position in Franklin, Massachusetts.
Or do you accept what?
To accept a librarian position in Franklin, Massachusetts. Again, this is for the committee.
I need the secretary, that already went out, right?
These positions have all been advertised. Yes. And do we get, except for the library, I just said last night.
Right. Do we get many applicants for the secretary job?
Yes, we have, again, it's gonna go through, because this is an executive, to the executive secretary to the principal's position. We're gonna go through one, almost, that get the second one ready now. But this is for a screening.
I'm curious, did she leave to go with him?
No.
Oh.
No, she went back to, she was formerly employed by the town of Dortmund. I believe that that's where she went back to.
Oh, okay.
Did they leave immediately or received? No, Mr. Burns has two events coming up in his life. The first is that he is getting married in about a week or so. And the second one is that he is put into leave effective October 11th. Although we are discussing that just in case his school does need him earlier. But can indicate that he'd be willing to stay until October 11th in order to help with any transition if needed. See, student travel? We have, excuse me, we have a few. First, from the Culinary Arts Program, it submitted an out-of-state student travel request for students to attend the Cook Around the World Culinary Competition being held in Orlando, Florida from April 24th, 2025 to April 28th, 2025. That is during the April vacation period. Students will fundraise to cover the cost of the trip. And the recommendation is to approve the out-of-state travel request submitted by Culinary Arts for the students to attend the Cook Around the World Culinary Competition being held in Orlando, Florida from April 24th to the 28th. And again, their own fundraising will be done to cover the cost of the trip. This is, this is the trip, I believe, they've done in the past? It has, in fact, one of our current bakers, Dalen Torres, who was the most recent addition, I shouldn't say that, he was last year's addition to the Culinary Program. He did this when he was a junior here at Diamond Regional. And he has gone on to become a very successful pastry chef, winning some worldwide awards. But they have done this. I did look into it deeply to find out where was it being held. It's Orlando, Florida, it's Disney World. But they do have quite the package deal that's worked out. It's a cost of only $1,200 per student that covers everything for the week, say, the entry into the program and all their activities. They're looking for a total of 20 students that they could bring down. But this would cover the airfare, too. This is airfare, everything. And they're gonna fund it. Very curious about that. They, they have plans, big plans to do this.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
On behalf of the students, I thank you. They're very excited when they presented this. The DECA Club has submitted an overnight student travel request for students to attend the DECA District Eight competition. This is their annual competition being held in Hyannis, January, the 9th, January 10, 2025. This is an annual DECA competition that has gone on for the last, as long as DECA has been there. I don't know if any of you have to be judges. I would, well, I was out, you went last year. So the recommendation is to approve the overnight student travel request submitted by DECA Club for students of the DECA District Eight competition, Hyannis, January 9th, January 10th.
So move. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, propose.
And another one is from the Diamond Football Team. They have submitted an out-of-state student travel request for students to participate in a football scrimmage at Barrington. The date is not mistaken there, they have already done this. Mr. Jennings, you and I spoke about this. This is for the committee to reaffirm the approval for the team to have traveled out of state on August 51st.
Need a second? All in favor? Aye, propose.
And the last is for the Diamond Soccer Team. They have submitted an after-hours student travel request for soccer players to attend the 28th Annual High School Night being held at Foxborough on August, October 5th, 2024, from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. And the cost of this trip will be covered by using fundraiser events. The recommendation is to approve this after-hours student travel request submitted by Diamond Soccer for the 28th Annual High School Night being held in Foxborough on October 5th from 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. Again, they're gonna raise all the funds to cover all the costs.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Soccer team, thank you.
That's great.
Dee, accepting the gifts.
Ms. Nebs is current online, too? Good. So this is a very interesting concept that we have been offered here. The department head of Advanced Manufacturing, Mr. Kirk Shwinad, is also online. So I'd rather have him explain exactly what this is. You can read it for what it is, but you'll hear what Blackhawk Industrial has contacted Mr. Shwinad and I'll let him explain it. Mr. Shwinad, are you online?
I am here, Mr. Bentley, can you hear me?
We certainly can. I would like you to explain.
All right, very good. I tried to turn on my video, but it's not allowing me. So I don't know if you'd be able to see me anyway, but.
Oh, we can hear you.
I am here. Okay, very good. So Blackhawk Industrial is one of the vendors that we buy tools and a variety of stuff from. And they came to us actually last year to ask us if we would be willing to participate in a new program they're starting. These auto cribs, as they're called, are basically vending machines that help shops organize their tooling. So rather than having drawers with stuff that's getting mixed from one bin in a drawer to another, which happens a lot, auto cribs were designed to help machine shops organize their tooling. Typically out in industry, the vendor will manage the system and keep it stocked. That won't be the case here at Diamond, but they came to us last year and said they wanted us at Diamond, the machine shop, to be their first school because they're gonna start this program where they bring these into schools to introduce the technology to students. So when they go out into the trade and they experience these things firsthand, it's not foreign to them. It's gonna be a huge benefit to us on the organizational side and inventory of our carbide tooling, our drills, our taps, and all of our small tools that we basically are consumable items, but we keep an inventory. So when something breaks, we can replace it and not have to wait to reorder. I did a quick inventory today. We have somewhere in the order of 2,000 to 3,000 inserts, 30, 30 different styles. And that's just our carbide inserts for all of our CNC machines. So I'm very excited about this. I'm very proud that Blackhawk selected Diamond. It's a testament to, you know, the teachers that I work with every day, the work we do to get these students ready to go out in the trade and the reputation that Diamond has and that our shop has for decades now. Everywhere we go, they say Diamond are the best. And it's evident when organizations like Blackhawk select us to be there first. So that's that, where they're looking to get it to us sometime in the next month or so and get it set up. It will be owned by Diamond, we're gonna sign off that we own it. Like I said, typically out in industry, the vendor owns the machine and they take care of the inventory and repair. But we're gonna own it and we're gonna take care of our own inventory. But again, helping us to organize our technology or our tools, I should say, and introducing this technology to students, which otherwise they wouldn't experience until they went out in the trade.
You, you people.
Oh, I actually, there was, there was a video that was attached with, that's behind yours, Dave. There's a link and upon clicking on, clicking on the link, you see where it says Critmasters Dash Solutions, the last part of it. Yeah, and it's a very interesting video on how it works. It's a vending machine that's actually circular. You put it in, it circulates to where it is, do it fast. It's like buying like a Coca-Cola out of a vending machine, but a lot more expensive. And drops down to the south. And Mr. Fazina, Dave Fazina is a Diamond graduate that owns his own company here. And he wanted to partner back with Diamond. He wants to do something very innovative and very, it's cutting-edge technology that he's putting out. He will come into the building, they will set it all up. They will organize everything. They will instruct the instructors on how to work the machine. The instructors will be a total child of this stuff. It's like a master key type of system that would set forty coins. But it is quite, if you look at the video, it is quite, quite exciting. It's quite an honor that they picked Diamond.
Mr. Shwinad, are you still on?
I am still here, yes.
Roughly, estimated value of that donation?
Somewhere in the $5,000 to $10,000 range for these machines, brand new. We are getting a reconditioned machine, one that's been brought out of industry and reconditioned. That's typically what they do with them on a, you know, whatever, three to five-year basis. They take them out, recondition them, and then put them back into service. And they're gonna donate this one, one of these, to us.
All right, good, thank you. I need a motion.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, man.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Propose.
Thank you, Kurt, well done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bentley.
You're very welcome, Kurt, have a great night.
Use of facilities?
We have several requests that are in here. The first is from the Diamond Alumni Association. They've submitted a request to use room 251 for their meetings that are held, as you see on the dates indicated for a month. They normally go from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I would waive all use of facilities fees. And that's the recommendation is to approve the request by the Alumni Association to use 251 for the meetings to be held on the dates that are in on the paper, 6 to 8 p.m. and waive the use of all fees.
Need a motion to approve? So move. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, propose.
Coming on the heels of that, the Diamond Family Advisory Council has submitted a request to use room 251 for their monthly meetings to be held on the second Tuesday of each month, except December. And that's 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. And to waive the use of fees. The recommendation is to approve that request by the Diamond Family Advisory Council to use room 251 for monthly meetings, second Tuesday of each month, except December, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. and to waive the use of all use of facilities.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, propose.
Third is that the Diamond Football Team wants to use the cafeteria for their team dinners on the dates that you see there, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. And to waive the use of all fees. This has been a tradition started by Tina Senra, Bell Deville, Tina Bell, yeah? That's, that was her maiden name, that was the name, yeah. Pardon me, Tina, if you listen again. And that she starts this, and it gets some team togetherness, but also they get a nice pasta dinner. And the recommendation is to approve the request of the Diamond Football Team to use, for use of the cafeteria for their team dinners on the dates indicated, 4:30 to 7:00, and to waive the use of all facilities.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Next is the Rotary Club of Fall River has submitted a request to use the cafeteria and room 251 for their annual pancake breakfast. It's held on Sunday, November 3rd, 6:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And to waive all use of facilities fees. Funds raised during this event are used for scholarships granted to students from all four setting communities. The recommendation is to approve this request by the Rotary Club to the cafeteria 251 for the annual pancake breakfast, Sunday, November 3rd, 2024, 6:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And to waive all use of facilities.
Need a motion to approve?
Yeah, one question.
Yeah.
So on this, someone will have to supply the janitor.
Sorry, what did you say?
We'll have, don't have a janitor present or?
That has been traditional. We have somebody, have to look, you're calling for support on that, yes. Yes, we do. We do supply a custodian to be there just in case. Lock on.
That's good, you know, just in case they need someone.
So we're donating either that time.
Yeah, absolutely.
I need a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
This is a fairly, this is a fairly new request that's committed. There's an informational sheet that's right after this, too, so you can see it. The Journey Christian Church has submitted a request to use the auditorium for their Christmas program to be held on December 6th, 2024, and December 7th, 2024. The times and the usage fees will be determined. I do have that on another page for you. They're also requesting permission to include a live nativity on the show, December 7th. There is backup information that's in your packets of a live nativity and particularly of the interest as to what they're going to do. They have provided information that they were responsible. We have, first, we asked, we have had animals on our property before when we had a small petting zoo here for the health benefit. They, they are outside. But the recommendation is to approve the request of the Journey Christian Church to use the auditorium, Christmas program, December 6th and 7th. Times and use fees to be determined. And we grant permission to include a live nativity on the show date of December 7th.
I have a question, have they ever done this, not here, have they ever done this before?
The answer is yes, they, they, this is something that they do. And they were looking for Diamond for the use of the facilities this time.
Where did they, where did they?
They haven't done it here.
No, I understand.
No, they have not done it here.
But where have they done it? I'm just curious if it's been successful or not successful.
They have only done Stony Creek Farm out of Swansea. And they do ensure that, I'm reading from what they've said to us here, to the school.
I was gonna say.
They do ensure everything is picked up afterwards.
What did you say?
It's an outdoor venue.
I know they've done, that's why I know that it's outdoor.
Stony Creek.
So my question, Mr. Bentley, to the chairman, are these prices that we had passed in that policy yet filled?
I would have to rely on.
We had a policy for a punishment charge for.
Yes.
Or a reimbursement, et cetera.
That probably would have to be looked at, but on another page that you have, it might be right after that one. There is, there is a suggested usage fee that's there for the auditorium, for the setup and for the Saturday program. Probably looks, yes, I see that we had it there, looks like this with two blocks at the top. And this is what they're looking for. We, we are suggesting on December the 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00, for the setup, the auditorium will be $25 an hour, for two hours, $50, no custodial charges. They're here and security, 38.
Yeah, the setup, the setup is fine, but we, for the use of our auditorium, we've always, that was, it was a lot higher fee than that. And, and as long as they're not exceeding, would we have, like, I think it was a limit there that made up the highest security, at least.
And we do have in there, we do have security that's on here also at $51 an hour for one hour that they would do it on the Christmas program, the December 7th show. The use of facilities, we looked at that, the we would be myself, Ms. Nebs, and actually our payroll person, because we connected it to how much it's this cost for us to do this.
But we have a chart. We don't have a budget chart. It's a, that's a policy on it.
It's 25, so it's a nonprofit, so it's $25 per hour.
Okay.
So because they're only doing, each day is only two hours that they're requesting, that's why it's so low. You're, you're used to seeing someone that's doing like a six-hour program.
Program, right.
So that's why this is low. And this is a nonprofit where the, like, the dance academy that does it every year, they're not, they're for profit.
Correct.
So that's why.
That's what I was saying. My question says on the bottom, a minimum of three hours will be charged due to contractual obligations. Is that three hours per day? I think it's a charge.
Yeah.
It's contractual for this, for the janitors.
Heard, I heard.
So that's only for?
Saturday.
For the Saturday.
Because the second shift's here, right? On Friday.
On Friday. The second shift is here until 11 o'clock.
And.
On Saturday, we have to open the building up.
Right, and security is in the building until 7 o'clock, so from 7 to 8.
Yeah, so we need an additional hour for that person.
All right, as long as it's on the schedule.
We did spend some time looking at this and who's here, who's not here, opening it up and working it out. And thank you for reminding me that it is a nonprofit because there are two different fee schedules that are out there. And this is what it came out to be.
Awesome. All right, need a motion to approve?
Do you want to come to hold it up? Yeah?
The animals?
I'll check it with you, Paul.
Mr. Chairman?
The animals, who's left, right?
Yes, yes.
They did come in yesterday to tour the facility and they met with Mr. Brilliant and Mr. Benavides. So I don't know, you know, if everything was how they expected it or not. So they may not even proceed with the request, I don't know that much.
But you're gonna have to work out where it is outside with the construction, right?
Well, that's up to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, outside, there's not much grass out there.
That's what I'm saying, so I don't know.
If they pick a spot.
They said it's outside, I, I was wondering, is it really outside or they think it's inside?
Not the live nativity, the live nativity is outside.
They'd probably have to set that up on the gravel.
Is, there, there is the gravel spot right outside of our main drive.
They can utilize the gravel and put a temporary fence up.
On my side, they can do it, just, and it's gotta be clear where they think they're gonna go.
Well, he said they saw the plant.
They did, they were here, so.
Yeah, she just said they did, I just don't know if they're gonna.
I, I haven't heard anything from yesterday's visits, so I don't know.
They, this is mostly preemptive on theirs, on that part. They are putting in the request in a hope that they can use it. They came and they toured it. I believe what they were doing was going to go back, they were gonna talk about it and then say, yes, it's a go at this price, or no, the place is not suitable for what we're going to do.
Now, I just have a question because of overtime. We're saying that, but, and Kit said about cleanup, who is gonna clean up the animals?
They said they're gonna clean it all up, they're responsible for it. That's what they said.
It, it's in the.
It's in the email.
They, they put it in the email to us, to Jenny Brilliant, they put it in there that they are responsible for the entire cleanup process. There it is, right here. Do you have a pa, do you have a page, paper that looks similar?
No, no, I was just asking because I, it is three hours contractually for overtime.
No, they put down there.
If they have to stay longer, if they have to clean.
They're doing it on the 7th, we intend to use Stony Creek Farm out of Swansea and we will ensure everything is picked up afterwards as we brought it home.
Oh, yeah.
That's what they said. Take them in their word.
Yeah.
We also charge a $250 cleaning fee. We also charge a two hundred and fifty-dollar cleaning fee that is either returnable or refundable if everything is left.
Oh.
Oh, perfect.
That wasn't on that number, that was.
No.
Really, yeah.
Good.
Alright, good, need a motion to approve?
I would love to.
Yep, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
One thing, financial report, Mr. Kitchen?
There's nothing, this, sign of class, I mean, sign of school. I think, I think what we've decided to do, especially with our freshman classes, is to pre-graduate a little bit in the prior year, so we hold out this year and all the exploratories are well stocked and they've been moving along. So it's kind of nice, it's not a pickup of all waiting for something, I'm not having something, but they concentrate on the freshman. It's, it's good to say.
Strong. Anybody have any questions? How much? Alright, moving on to, gee, expenditures, Mr. Kitchen?
We have our MSBA expenditures that we've covered, we have a expenditure of Susa Branco Electric for eleven thousand thirty, three hundred and thirty dollars, buildings and ground sets for the lighting in the new parking lot up top.
Solar?
Beyond that, yeah, no, it's not solar. It's hard wire. It's hard wire to the, it's hard wire to the transformer near the solar.
Oh, so we have regular lights in the parking lot now?
We will, if they are, we put the sound tubes in the other day and then. Frank will be back and install the, the poles, and wire it out, just, cause that's gonna be the handicap parking eventually.
Yeah, we did, okay, yeah.
That, the small areas, like small.
Red to fourteen car park.
Yeah, the next three expenditures.
But, I'm sorry, but that was, wouldn't that be a new building?
They did not have it in there.
No?
I think they were gonna wait for power lines all the, but feel, we can't wait, because we have people coming in, especially in the mall, or parking there.
Okay.
Is that, it's not gonna interrupt with that?
They have to disconnect it later when they're putting in the. Short run. I mean, as far as the sound tubes, no.
Yeah.
No, it's on the perimeter, exterior. Might be actually a D do.
Yeah, right. Oh, oh, I just speak about language.
Yeah, the next three expenditures left for the return, the LPNs, those were departments that sponsored a student at the LPN program. And then the last one is E and T Plumbing for ten thousand two hundred dollars, that was for the valves, so we're doing the boilers, probably the firing them up next month, so we've done some work on the boilers upstairs, just so there won't be any hiccups.
Need a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Oppose?
And then we have the student activities.
The student activities, there is one additional one, adding the class of twenty twenty-eight, we did keep in, class of twenty twenty-four until we get some, make sure it's all cleared out, talk to Ms. Woods, find out, but it's only at fourteen hundred dollars and that. We just got both to accept the list of the student activities.
Need a motion to approve?
Some motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
The school store is large.
I, I, I see it, I see it all the time, I just wonder what we're gonna do with that.
Um, I, my opinion is, we don't have a school store, I don't, I don't have a plan, we'll see if we have some kind of a commercial area within the building, because you're gonna have to have.
You're right, it's trying to be.
Well, I don't, I don't think, you know, set some, uh, that, that, any of the cabinetry, display cases with some of this money, but I'd like also.
That's about, that's about a quarter of it.
Yeah, I have that, well.
Yeah, maybe a third.
I'd love to have.
Maybe a third.
I mean, we can do it ourselves, obviously, but then you just have to get a ton of glasses, but, it would be another D do if we don't.
Yeah, it would be, but.
I'm open to suggestions, I mean, I, I really think they could maybe do something for the senior class, as far as something, if they leave, they have something to take with them.
I'd like to know what on average the school store makes per year.
Okay.
To, for, for me to really look at what we could do back to the students, pretty ongoing.
Sustainability.
Cause I hate to do for, you know, this year, next year, this year, and then after that, we have no money to do anything, I'd love to know what that school store makes annually, so we can look at what we can do for the kids every single year.
So it's just not a two, three year?
Yeah, I mean, even if it goes towards, you know, senior prom or something like that, you know what I mean, you know, something, we, we could go towards something.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
We, we support the clothing for skills for this part, we also do it for that, actually, it's the same way, so, playing on the age of some of those jackets, outfits, that would be probably the direction for it, so that's not gonna go away. It's just, you know, recycling such, but that usually goes under appropriations, it's been, like, anything else's skills, so, I'm sure this is, we can use it for that, that would go back to the students.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright.
Next, I, House Building Program update?
So the committee that Ms. Torres was here, she's not alive, correct?
She is not.
Okay, so do you see in front of you the list of items from the area communities? Some are ongoing from last year, some are still waiting for material, others are evaluating. Do you have any questions on any of the projects in the communities? I see Rosemary Wishhouse is doing that again, which is awesome. Anything, questions?
Just an update on the, the house.
Okay.
Alright, then the House in Swansea, Chairman, they have started the project, and the, that they best filled the foundation already, and made some room for our trailers and the students, I was there last week, students were already on site, and they're gonna be looking to go for it, get it closed in before the winter. And then the house is in Swansea on Tess Abigail Lake.
Chris? Thank you. Jay, LPN program update?
The LPN is, I'd like to go back to something that I was asked at the last school committee meeting, which is including your information, and that was, it was a question, I think, about the cost of that program. She did write it by Mr. Kitchen, this was my idea, I'll, I'll let you speak to that, my next person.
What, what I do is, in the one hundred and regular, regular appropriation, we have four hundred, four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars appropriated for the LPN. When we look at our expenditures today, which are primarily your direct, direct, your teacher's assistant, administrative assistant, and then your three instructors, you also have your lease payment, you're at five fifty-four, there, you're a little town. You do have seven oh four, which is the reviving, which has sufficient funds to carry the program, that I listed here, it's, it's got about somewhere in the forty thousand dollar range, so, the lease will be paid on the seven oh four. I don't anticipate having all of these expenditures in the budget, so this year you'll be fine, it won't be an issue, running the program, paying the rent, you'll have a surplus, I think, in some of these supply lines and upgrade lines and such. It's revenues that you'll receive from this year's enrollments, this year's enrollment, you have nine industry students, so, with those nine students, you'll get chapter seventy money for it, so, I used last year's chapter seventy number, which was that twenty-one thousand nine forty-one, so, it should be in the vicinity, you might be up a little bit, three percent or so, but that gives you one ninety-seven. You won't receive any revenue on your out-of-district kids this year because they've already paid. So again, it falls back to what the composition of next year's classes are, so you have to bring in some out-of-district kids to pay the tuition again, subsidize to bring that revenue back up, because they'll pay in the first year, so if you brought in ten, to, it's ten thousand dollars in two years, so, they'll be bringing the hundred thousand, that would extend this next year, that will get you an extra year. I still, I think we need to discuss whether we stay at least, because the lease doesn't expire in two years, try to move one year, and then move to the next building. Physically, I think it's gonna be kind of adjusted, because they have all their books down there, we do, like I said, we do have on the inside seven oh five, I think we can manage it, we'd have to be a little more conservative, and whether or not it's gonna be full-time employees down there with the reinstructors, or it's gonna be adjuncts with the director and administrative assistant, I think it has to have a subcommittee, so this year we will be fine, there won't be any issue. It's just a matter of getting to the next year and then developing a program, whether it's gonna be daytime, daytime, adjunct, or full-time, it might be a combination, so.
So I, I have a couple comments to make sure that you put this together, but, does this include the electricity and the heat, or is that included?
That's included, right.
The second thing is just include benefits and all the insurance and everything else, so, I mean, it's not really breaking, even if we, if we use.
It's not, it's not.
So it's, that, that's my thing, is, is, is we really have to meet again, and review this before we do take it up again next year.
All I think you have to, because you're programmatically, you're gonna have to look at how you're gonna, how you're gonna, where, where direction are you gonna go, and how we, as far as, if we remain a part-time program, and is it gonna be during the day? When you, is it gonna be, if it's a part-time again, do you need full-time staff?
I think that all has to be discussed, because if you're going to.
And then that will move here in two years, let's say you start there next year, all of your obviously people here, so obviously we have to look at it as, alright, it's gonna be a night program, and, but these are things, Mr. Chairman, that we have to be discussing.
Yeah, and I think.
I think I recognize that.
That's exactly what Paul and I have spoken about that, and that's one of my notes here, is that, you know, what you know first, the reimbursement, because people are listening about the reimbursement, all the students have been reimbursed, everything that were accepted at the full-time, so that part is, is kind of clean right now. But there is definitely a recommendation that there needs to be some kind of a committee put together, of a planning committee, what are we doing for next year? Do we wanna do part-time, can we go back to full-time, do we want to go on pause, but, you know, this is the year to do it, because something's going to happen in September of twenty-five, just a year ago. You're on the clock though, because if we're going to change radically, the border registration, we're saying, has a six-month period of time, they need it by June, is their absolute deadline, so we need to start now to start saying, what are we going to do for next year?
I don't think I've, I don't think I've run into that, but.
Yeah, we, we talked about.
I got a phone call, I got a phone matter, it would be better with panicking, panicking.
So we're gonna pay, we're gonna finish it out, there's no way they're gonna let it fly out.
And he said, no, I don't, I don't think we're gonna be in a position with all the renovations we did and everything we did to let you guys out, at least I just wanted to know that. Nice call, but, panicking.
How long is the lease?
It, it terminates this year, this year coming up.
No, no.
June, is it June year, right?
Yeah, June, twenty-six, twenty-six.
It is twenty-six.
We're gonna use it for this year, chose a following year, perfect, all the sin and limo.
That's why, what is, what is the plan go with it, going forward, because we have that.
Well, something, something we can discuss, we'll, we'll set up another subcommittee, yes, and we can discuss what we want to be going forward with that, obviously, we finish on.
I know one thing.
It's a session. Discuss it.
Alright. Uh, moving on to, hey, admissions subcommittee.
Nor then we have to be met, and we filed for an extension, and as of tonight's meeting, on here, we have still, we have to hear from the Department of Education concerning the extension being granted, or filing that. Behind the scenes though, we have our new director of guidance, which is working feverishly on looking at the revisions, we mostly language edits, but she's working on that very well. So we will definitely have something to present to them, but we just need the time to put it together.
Yep, and, and once that's completed, if you could let us know, we'll set up a meeting.
Absolutely, because it'd have to come before the board anyway for approval.
Yep, okay.
Absolutely.
Uh, super chat, correct the report?
Very quick, just to highlight the highlights of my report, is that the opening day report, Mr. Beagan was there, so he certainly added anything that he would like to add from Mr. Beagan, who's by the side. Actually, it was, we met on August twenty-seventh, it was a convocation of everybody, Mr. Beagan presented the grade of all, from the group of location school district committee, the well wishes, for a good year, other presenters, Rainey LaChapelle from the Bengal Foundation, Eric Kenny from Suffolk Construction, Patty Ankron, United Way. And we focused on this year, respecting responsibility, the faculty focusing on our students, connecting professional at all times. The second part of the day was professional development for them, opening day enrollment report is here, all broken down in several formats, we had a record number of students of fourteen eighty-five in the high school. As far as the admission report, to let you know that although we've accepted three hundred and eighty-five students, we still have over three hundred students who are quote waitlisted right now, I say it that way because it's ongoing enrollment.
Does that happen?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, so, we, we had students that did not come, because somebody told me last night, a young lady from Florida that she was asked, her school was asked to get her records together, send it back.
Yeah, it, it's ongoing, so what happens, as soon as there's an opening, we go to the next person on that list, and we ask them to go in, and we need from the sending school, the one thing that, I wish I could go back to the sending school this way, maybe we'll reach them, but one thing that holds up getting students into here, is that they don't turn in their final grades. If somebody applies to Diamond and doesn't make it unlike the first round, as it's called, then we start going down the list, we say, but your grades are not complete, the application is not complete, so it's calls back to the schools saying, we need a final recall card, we need final grades, and the parents get them too, but it holds the process up by like a day or two. And so we're making a push on that this year, they say, get your package in completely, because you never know when you're gonna get that call, most students get it in March, ninety-nine percent get it, but there's that one percent that start getting it in June, July, August, and even now still getting the calls, saying, if we have a spot for you at Diamond, are you still interested? If so, we need your final grades from last year.
Okay, so that was my question, do we have students, did we drop in from the three eighty-five already?
No, we, we've gone down a couple, but we replaced them right away.
Awesome.
I think this morning's enrollment was, as a matter of fact, was like three eighty-four, but they were on the phone calling up another kid, they go to the bullpen sometimes, you know, that's how they look at it, so, the goal is to keep, the goal is to keep, the goal is to keep the freshman class at three eighty-five consistent. A little more difficult sometimes with Southwest students. Then we had a very successful night, a family orientation night, Mr. DiBiaseo, you were there for that on September the fourth, and there were over five hundred parents and guardians that came to listen to All About Diamond, it was a very interesting night, lots of questions, lots of answers, they're very interactive.
Mr. Bentley, I just wanted to comment on that, I was, I was very proud of our faculty, they did fantastic talking to the parents and students, and they're, they cut the message across, and all questions were answered, and we all stood around afterwards, talking to the parents lined up, as you saw, about questions they might have, it was.
Yeah, it took about an hour and a good, a good thirty to thirty-five minutes afterwards, the parents lining up with individual administrators to ask them questions. One funny story that struck me out of the night was, we talk about cell phones, okay, that's a big thing, cell phones, so, one gentleman raises, it's him, I said, I thought he had a question, he said, yeah, he says, I know about the cell phones, so like, with this phone, he says, I texted my son all day long on the first day of school, asked him, how's it going, how's it going, he says, when you come home, he said, why didn't you answer, he says, oh, now that, we can't use our cell phone at Diamond. I said, thank you for the compliment.
It's kind of was, I just, I was trying to get a hold of him at lunchtime, you mean, they can't call at lunchtime? And Mr. Bentley says they have twenty-two minutes to eat, and they've gotta get their food, sit down, eat, and, and, and they'll have time to talk.
Yeah, but it was, it was, parents who were there were very upbeat, and we, we did find that many of the parents who were there, they did need some translation services, because we do have a good number of parents whose sons and daughters don't speak English fluently, and they still came to listen to all the presentations, great, so that's, that's wonderful.
Very good, good. Good, thank you. Uh, moving on to calendar events.
The calendar events are there, there's nothing to really point out to you, we're into just the beginning part of the school year, as you can see, we do have a holiday coming up, Columbus Day on October the fourteenth, but other than that, you see this calendar is filled with activities. But other than that, you see the calendar is filled with activities that are going on. Uh, we are in full sports season two with the, um, we have football, soccer, volleyball, all going on cross-country too. So we're, we're into it. It's, we, we are into a good season right here right now. We're going well.
And our next school committee meeting is set for October the tenth.
That is correct.
All right, uh, we don't have anything, like, on this, this is paid in for twenty dollars.
Yeah, we do not.
We have the, uh, MASC, Mass.
You have a flyer inside your material there, uh, M-A-S-S-M-A-C. Uh, if any member of the committee does want to go to it, please let us know and we will register you for a maybe.
And we have a, need to go to executive session?
Yes.
We've announced through General Law Chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eight paragraph, we discussed guidance, we strive to collect the body, in case of meeting. May I, that's true, and look back on the body, the public users of the body, the chairs of the class, which we does. We discuss absentee, DAA, and DTA negotiations. We will be entering to open session there like we do.
You have a motion to go to executive session? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a roll call?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Dibiasio?
Yes.
Mr. Beagan?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Mr. Pachico? Dr. Nara?
All right, we're back in the open session. Need a roll call?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Dibiasio?
Yes.
Mr. Beagan?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Mr. Pachico? Dr. Nara?[1791.61]